I will call the sweetie daughter. Just mind anybody if anyone wants to speak on any items that is on the agenda or that is not on the agenda. You can fill out a blue card and we'll call you at the appropriate time. Now that we're all here, roll call.
Commissioner Charleston.
President.
Commissioner Hovey.
Here.
Commissioner Laney.
President.
Vice Chair Lee.
Here.
Chair Oblea.
Here.
Here. Would you please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, public com- public comments, do we have any cards for public comments?
Yes, we have received one from Keith White.
That was on six point two.
Oh, you're something on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll hold off for now. Is that the only one?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Or do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda today?
Chair, I have none at this time.
Okay, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any comments or do we have a motion to approve this consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey.
Aye.
Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee.
Aye.
Chair Oblea.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, this is running smoothly. Okay, very good. Let's go into presentations. I see we have two presentations, we still have two. Okay, the first one is Desi Lane Pilot Project.
I'll take that one, Commissioner, thank you. So we wanted to bring an update to you with regard to Desi Lane. We had done a pilot study, you may have heard of, on Desi Lane. And we'll go ahead and pull up a PowerPoint. You'll see where we closed Desi Lane because of the complaints that were being brought to the city with regard to the community, the Stancia Community Association was concerned about the cut through that was occurring during mainly the startup hours for the high school. Where what would happen is vehicles heading down Sumner would see that the Citrus Lane left turn, Citrus Street left turn lane was backed up all the way to Sumner. And so therefore they would go straight down into the Stancia neighborhood, go around and then go into the parking lot where the signal is and therefore bypass that left turn lane back up. And what would happen is once, once the signal got called for the north-south movement, then it would reduce the number of vehicles trained left into the parking lot. And so it sort of exacerbated the problem with the people doing the shortcuts. Neighborhood was calling complaining about the high speeds on their neighborhood streets, residential streets. We went out there, we confirmed that it was true. They were, there were speeding vehicles, there were loud, vehicles with loud music playing. When we were there, we did a site visit with the school principal or assistant principal. And one, one kid got out of the car and didn't look, almost got hit, walked across the street. There was trash litter on the street, so it's definitely an issue. And so we took it to Public Safety Commission in July. And they heard it and there was a couple people from the neighborhood community association that was there. They recommended closing the street permanently. They would like to have that solution. However, that is not a viable solution. We looked into legal aspects of it and it's not going to work. And so we looked at other options. If you can scroll down the, oh, I guess I have it, sorry. There we go. So some of the options that we looked at, I'm going to go down. Is, is to have the, the high school allow drop off on their campus. The, from Orange Street down to Citrus Street, it's about a 2,500 linear foot distance. And so that would really help solve the issue for drop off. And the problem with this solution was that the, the lane from Orange Street down to the parking lot is a fire lane. It's only 20 foot wide. And in order to have this become official access way, it would have to be widened to 30 foot according to the State Architects Office. So then we looked at maybe doing modifications to the signal, adding two left turn lanes in and allow the traffic to go onsite. The school was moderately interested in this. They felt like there's a pinch point at the right, when they turn right. And that the two lanes of traffic coming in for drop off, one would have to either turn right or both would turn left. And then you have students being dropped off from one car and then having to cross over another car to get to the school. So this still may be a possibility at some point in the future. But then we looked at some other options. And this just shows you an overall of the, of the neighborhood and the, and the school, the streets. This option is to modify the traffic signal. This is what we will be presenting to council. At the next council meeting, we'll also be taking this to the Public Safety Commission for them to take a look at as well. But this would be restricting the movement from the neighborhood street onto Citrus Avenue to left turn movements and right turn only. So therefore you would not be allowed to go into the high school parking lot. So we believe this would, would solve the problem. And so we're, we're looking into the possibility of doing this and we'll present this to council. So there'd be, this is the phases, you have your left turn. So it would allow you to have a much longer left turn movement coming into the campus. And then you have, you continue to have this phase going. So what we'd be doing is removing the crosswalk on the west side of the intersection. This would allow a free right turn movement during that operation. And there'd be less conflict with students. So students would come, that are coming from the neighborhood or being dropped off in that area would, would just either cross over and then turn, go head north. But they wouldn't go north here, so there'd be less conflicts at the driveway. And then this would be the next phase. And then there'd be a phase allowed to go into the, to the campus and finally one coming out. So that's, that's where we're headed right now. And that's, that's an update with what we've been looking at. This, this has been an issue for the neighborhood for several years. So we've, cities have received complaints over the last probably 10 years about this issue. And we believe that this, this solution will take care of it. So that's, that concludes my update. Be happy to respond, any questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Hovey.
I'm sorry. When they just did, they just completed the, the parking lot remodel. Who, does only the school district approve that? Because it's their property?
Pretty much, yes. You can see the, the changes. The driveway used to come along the west side of the property and then it used to have a curve that went out to the intersection. Now they've added much more parking onsite with what their modifications were when they added the STEM building, Eastham building. And so now if you look at this parking lot during the school hours, it's about 70% full. So I, I believe that there used to be a large issue with parking in the neighborhood. But I think that issue's gone away because of this new parking.
No, I'm there every day.
Okay.
So, and I was there before the remodel. But there is, there's a huge bottleneck right there where those two little arrows are turning. But even in the afternoon, there is a huge, I didn't, I didn't like this new design.
Oh, you didn't?
Either, no. It's not, it's not helping. There might be more parking, but, but it doesn't help for traffic flow. That's why I was wondering who approved it.
It's the state school board of architecture that does everything on private property for schools. The city is only privy to the secret document and then any impacts that happen in the public right of way.
We did present to them this option here. But it's, it would require money to do this because you see the two right turns coming out. It's possible that they could modify Citrus Avenue by putting a right turn out on, from their, their new parking lot. And then this would, what would happen is we would allow the closure of the right lane on Citrus because of capacity, the capacity's not needed to have two lanes through there. So it would, it would make this a, a free right coming out of the campus. And we believe that this would, would make the, you know, the exit, egress out of the campus much better.
You know, they already use orange, I mean, they already use that back alley. They've used it for years. They did widen it. I use it to get in front of the football stadium.
Right.
And people, there are two, there's both sides going in and out.
I noticed that too.
Yeah.
But when I presented this to them, they, they, they felt like the State Architects Office would have to be involved in that. They shouldn't be using that according to the.
But they open the gate every day.
I know.
Vice Chair Lee.
Yeah, Bill, just out of curiosity, how many, so how many drop off and pickup zones are there? Is that the only one?
No, no, there's, so they're like, Commissioner Hovey was saying, they're, they do come in off Orange Street. They go down past the baseball fields. They head east through the campus. Actually, it's between the.
Between the two baseball fields?
Yeah, yeah. And then they, they have that all coned off, so they have to come back out that same way. So there's one drop off. There's drop off on Scholar Way. And then, and then there's drop off in the school. So there's, I believe there's three drop off locations. Maybe four, okay.
Any comments?
Question for. So my question would be is that, you know, we, we don't really get to control what the school does. We know that. We can give them our ideas and what we think would solve it, but really we can only control what we do. And as a resident, you know, in that community, that would be pretty disheartening, you know? That, that Stancia is a nice area to live in. And those homes were more expensive than a lot of the homes in Eastvale, except the ones that were on One Acre Parcels Down River Road. So for me, you know, they have HOAs. What would be the difficulty in making it a gated community and stop all this stuff? We're talking about redesigning all these roads and, you know, changing how we want to do things. But if we make it a gated community and approve that to them, that stops all that. The only way you get in there is if you're a resident.
That's a possibility, but it would require, there'd be a lot of capital costs and that, that would be part of that, you know, to purchase the gates. The streets would have to be made private, so then they'd have to maintain their own streets. So there's a lot of factors there in making it a gated community. I think that this traffic signal operation will solve the problem. Because if, if they don't get the carrot of getting ahead of the, the line by going through there because the traffic signal doesn't allow them, they're going to stop going through there. So I, I think it's going to solve the problem and it's a, it's a, you know, economical way of, of handling it.
So the streets would have to be privatized if it was gated then?
Yes.
Wow, that does pose a problem. Okay, thank you.
I have one comment. On that one diagram where you showed exiting the neighborhood, you, they're going to make it just a left and a right turn only. You're assuming that people are going to obey that left and right turn only rule. So we have, coming out of 99 Cent Store on Hamner, it's a right turn only. But people come, turn left out of there all the time. And there's coming north on Hamner, there's no left turn into the parking lot at 99 Cent Store. It's, you're supposed to go straight, you're not supposed to make any left turns into it. But they're making left turns all the time.
Yeah, so it's, so this is a public street. It's, and it's, so we can enforce it and provide a few tickets for them. That would probably stop that pretty quick.
We would have to have a officer there.
But I think once, once they realize that, you know, they're not going to get the advantage of cutting through the neighborhood here. And, and also we can shorten that time, that cycle time, so it's not as long. Because you don't have to have it as long if people are only making a left and a right out of there. Then it's going to discourage them from, from taking that route. I mean, we, we believe it's a worthwhile option to, to try out.
You could try.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
One more question. So going back to the larger map, from the Orange Street, the alleyway. Yeah.
This one here?
Yeah. So Bill, you said 30 foot, so it's currently we have 20 foot?
I believe it's what it is, yeah.
So do we have enough room into the high school to acquire 10 more feet out right of way?
Well, I mentioned, they, they aren't interested in spending any more money. And that would be a fairly large cost to widen that access way. So, and I'm not sure if there's enough room to, between the ball fields and the alley to make that wider. Because I think it would have to be another 10 feet wider for the State Architect and Fire Department to allow that to be a through passage and a fire lane.
We can't get 10 feet out of that one?
No, I don't think so. I think it's pretty tight, yeah.
Yeah, but they're using that now, so it wouldn't really make a difference because we're using it now. So what would be the difference?
I think making it official could be a problem.
Yeah, I know, but that still would solve the problem because they're using it now. I'm just saying, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next presentation is on Riverside Transit Authority.
Yes, that's correct. And we have the Director of Service Planning and Scheduling, Mr. Joe Forgiorini. Did I get it right? And let me get that.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Oblea and Commissioner. Glad to have the opportunity to give you the short update on RTA's plans for City of Eastvale. Thank you very much. So firstly, just a quick recap on what Riverside Transit Agency provides within the City of Eastvale at this point in time. We currently have two routes within the city. The primary one is Route Three. It's an east, it's a north-south alignment serving Corona, Norco and Eastvale. And within Eastvale, it begins on Hamner Avenue. It crosses on Limonite Avenue. Then 68th Street, Pat's Ranch Road, Sumner Avenue, Citrus and back onto Hamner Avenue to continue its journey into Norco and Corona. And our second route is Route 29. It's an east-west alignment, so it provides a linkage from Eastvale through Harupa Valley into downtown Riverside. So both those two routes originate, they have their terminus at the new Goodman Center Transit Hub up where Amazon Eastvale location is. And that's been the case since January of 2018. We're very appreciative to all the work that the city did with us to establish that hub for us. It includes some driver amenities as well and that's a huge help to us. So we're looking forward to adding a third route for the city. The city has obviously grown immensely over the decades and has now pushed to the further western extremities beyond what Route Three can realistically serve. And as a result, we for quite a few years now have had the intention of launching a route to serve the western corridor. And it'll focus on Limonite Avenue and then connect through via Archibald Avenue to River Road straight into Corona through Norco. So it'll provide a very fast link through the western parts of the city. It'll tap some of the retail that we don't currently touch on, some that exist right now today, both on Limonite and on Archibald. And also, you know, big developments that we believe are, you know, close to happening such as the merge on Limonite at, at Archibald. And, you know, we look forward to being in place even perhaps before that's fully built out. So in terms of new Route Four, the, as I mentioned, it really is serviced to the western side of Eastvale. We just can't do it all with Route Three. It would create, you know, extremely long travel times for the current riders of that route. And then we have a fast link to Corona. And at Corona, we have the link with MetroLink and the rest of the RTA network. So Corona Transit Center right at the North Main MetroLink Station is really the, the key linkage that Route Four will connect into. So also then we have the linkages within the City of Eastvale itself serving, you know, Amazon and all of the other key retail areas. Service should be launched with a weekday service to begin with. That's a normal standard practice for our agency to begin with weekday service. Once that proves successful, we can then look, you know, to providing the weekend service. We plan to have two buses operating, so we'll have service approximately every 50 minutes from 6:00 AM in the morning. Last service is departing around 7:30 in the evening, Monday through Fridays. In terms of finances, I didn't put this on the slide, but just for your reference, for us, it's about, you know, close to a $600,000 annual investment in operating cost for those two vehicles. They will be our smaller fleet, they're what we refer to as our cutaway fleet. If you can visualize a, like a Ford, Ford 450 type heavy duty truck front with a bus back on, on the vehicle. So that's the type of vehicle that would operate it. You will see them on the weekends here on Route Three as well currently today. So that's the, the type of vehicle. If we happen to do exceptionally well, we'll obviously upgrade to the larger vehicles. But at this stage, you know, our modeling would suggest we'll be comfortable with those sort of numbers. We expect around about 300 people a day to use Route Four when it's up and running and fully matured, usually within about a year from launch. And again, probably at least around 120 to 150 of those boardings would occur in the City of Eastvale. The new stops for this route, every, you know, roughly quarter mile to a third of a mile, we do insist on having the stops adjacent to a legalized crossing. So that will usually be a signalized intersection. The roads that will be operating are very large, three lane each way road. So really important that we have those stops adjacent to those intersections, usually on the far side as you pass through the intersections. And then that discourages the jaywalking and the associated dangers that come with that. Limonite will have four new bus stop pairs, again, at most major signalized intersections. And Archibald Avenue likewise, we anticipate seven. And on Limonite, the merge development, that would add a fifth pair there as well. We don't anticipate, that'll be there when we begin service, which we hope to do in May next year. We have quite a bit of civil work to do to be able to launch the service. So we have many of those stop pairs requiring some additional concrete work to accommodate, you know, future bus stop amenities and provide a safe area for the passengers to board and alight the buses. So that's just a quick overview of the alignment, again, Limonite, Archibald through to River Road. So it's a very fast, efficient routing, take about 40 minutes end to end. So quite a fast trip through this alignment. And again, we'd, we'd expect as many people from Eastvale using it, but also people coming up from Corona. You've got a lot of retail opportunities in this city. And I definitely would expect to see, you know, a lot of intercity movement taking advantage of this route. So again, the civil works, you know, we're looking at a May 2020 completion. We originally hoped for January, but as we've worked with the city, it's become evident that we need to do a little more than we originally planned for. But better to do that now than to have to go back later. Again, we appreciate cities' efforts to work in with us. We've worked together, we've done quite a bit of field work already. The next step will be for our own agency to put together a bid packet. And we hope to have that on the street by the end of October for contractors to bid on the work. And obviously the city will keep an eye on that process as well as, as they always do with any of our civil works. They're always subject to city inspection. But to reassure you, all the civil works will come from the RTA's budget. So we're not looking for any contribution from the city. We do have Tump funds. This corridor is a Tump eligible, both Archibald and Limonite. So that provides us a good source. In fact, that's exactly what Tump is really aimed at doing, providing that required infrastructure. So the main thing we need to do is just to widen sidewalks in places. A lot of what was developed on Archibald and to a certain extent on Limonite as well was meandering sidewalks. Unfortunately, the touching point where they do connect with the curb that we need for the buses to alight and board passengers often is very short, not quite long enough for our needs. So we'll just be going in and filling in a little bit of the, the gap. So it'll usually involve a little bit of turf removal and replacement with, with concrete. It'll usually be within 100 feet of the nearest signalized intersection. Again, I mentioned Tump funding for the Capitol Works. And then the good news is the SB1 gas tax funding. That does provide us the basis for launching Route Four. It was one of our signature projects for our SB1 funding. So we're really looking forward to getting it up and running. So at this point, I think it's question time.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Vice Chair Lee.
I have several questions. So thank you so much for coming out and making the presentation. One question I have is it, it's great to see that it's linking to the MetroLink station down in Corona. I'm assuming it's kind of coordinated with the MetroLink schedule?
Correct, we do have that opportunity to bring people down in the mornings connecting to the commuter trains into LA and to Orange County. And then in the evenings, again, picking up. So our last departures would in fact align with the last arriving trains as well.
Okay, so also that means, so would, would the schedule kind of change during the peak hours? So the headway be different?
The headway is adjusted slightly for those connections. We, with our 50 minute frequency, we can't meet every train during the peak. There're usually a train every 20 minutes when you combine the two lines. So we won't meet every train. We usually focus on the Orange County ones. They typically have the highest pattern of travel demand from our region to places like Santa Ana and Irvine for jobs relative to the level of, you know, traveling to LA. So we would generally try to match those trains as our first priority.
And currently, can, can we go back to the map?
Sure.
So it's not linking to the Riverside line, the Ontario East station, right?
Correct. At this stage, it's a great question. There is a lot of strong travel patterns going from the, what I call the I-15 North Corridor from Corona through Norco and Eastvale into the, you know, the southwestern region of San Bernardino County. We have for a number of years now tried to work with Omnitrans to bring the Omnitrans bus system into the Eastvale Goodman Center Hub. At this stage, their funding's position hasn't allowed them to do that. We may need to look more proactively at taking the step to bring our bus into that region. And we could certainly look at, you know, including the East Ontario MetroLink as part of that alignment. You know, we also have to look at the options of the connection into Ontario Airport. And also usually we would focus on Ontario Mills as our point where we would connect into the wider Omnitrans network.
Yeah, so that's.
So that's a work in progress and Route Four may well be the vehicle to provide that linkage as well. Not at this point and not within this scope of proposal, but yes, certainly it's a, a work in progress to fill that gap. There wouldn't be a time when I haven't stood at the bus stop here at Limonite and Hamner and been approached by somebody saying, how do I get to Ontario? First question.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm going to.
Strong travel demand.
Linking it to the MetroLink station and then the Ontario Mills and the airport. I think that will be helpful. As you mentioned, Omni is going through some financial troubles, so.
They have quite a few committed projects that are stretching their resources, so put it that way.
Including several BRT proposals. So yes, I think RTA taking a proactive approach rather than relying on Omni, I think would be more.
Yeah, Omni certainly would be a lower cost option to bring that linkage in. They're close, but obviously not close enough at this point. But yeah, should we not see any proactive step on their part, we'll, we'll have to look at that. It's very difficult for us to ignore the strength of travel demand in, in this corridor to go north.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
Oh, sir, we have one public comment for this item.
Thank you. For this item?
Yes.
Oh.
Keith White.
Okay. It's okay, take your time. Can you reach the microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Comes off if you want.
Um, I'm RTA rider, I've been riding for RTA for almost 20 years now. So you should drive a Megalot, it's a van, bus in other days. There's a couple, there's a few things that I have worried about. To do Route Four, we have the station over here. Are you going, okay, probably Route Four, I'm, I'm sure Route Four can probably stop behind, right, Amazon. If you get out there, you have probably have to walk to the station. And I can't shop there or anything. And we need to look about how we have a bus go down Hamner almost to, can I say that street? In Gal, Galeno, whatever you want to call it.
Galeno.
Yeah, I'm bad at any. So you, so I can't do shopping there. And the other issue is, are we going to have bus stops at Limonite in summer so I can go down and shop? What about, that I was, I'm just saying, Archibald, I've got to Clough Street. You know, we need to figure out how to get routes closer to the station. And then also the, the other, the other shopping center, the newest coming up, I forgot which one it is.
The Merge?
The Merge is one other one too.
Hamner Place?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew it was one of the, so we need to look at options about that also, since this new Route four coming in. Maybe Route four can maybe do an alternate routing on some trips. Or try maybe have them come up behind and try to put a stop on the other side, where it's a crosswalk or something. You know, and then go back around and, because according to this, they're gonna hop on the freeway. Get back off of Limonite and go back down Limonite, back to Corona, so that's an issue that I'm looking at. And also, this ought to be good for the college kids, because they can now get to R C C with this new Route four. There's a few people that work in goodwill that had to walk almost a mile and a half just to get to Route three to get to work. And they're all the way over there by Archibald. So this will be a good route to have for the high school kids and all that. But that's my issue I have is, well, how can we fix that part over here by the station? So we need to look into that kind of routing, that's my main concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to address that?
I can certainly speak to a couple of those points. Uh, firstly, uh, the station, we'll take that question on notice.
Lifted.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that question on notice and we will, uh, we're in regular contact with Keith, so we'll be able to. You know, look into that suggestion, uh, the way we circuit in that area of Goodman Center. You know, we have to circulate in that anti-clockwise direction, counterclockwise, in order to. Be able to use the available traffic signals, we can't go the opposite way around, so.
Uh huh.
Um, and our routing is, is a temporary routing in that area. Uh, we would normally have wanted to go Hamner both north and south, uh, the reason we didn't. Um, is because we cannot get a bus stop on the corner of Hamner and Limonite here. Um, obviously the future that will, I'm confident will change, but. At this point, you know, when we launch, we'll be uh doing this type of routing using the freeway. Just to be able to get us to serve the uh Eastvale gateway here on, on Limonite. Until we can have a stop on Hamner. Uh, the other, the Merge development, yep, we'll definitely be serving that, uh, we already have our stops, I believe, conditioned as part of that development, so. Really looking forward to that coming online, and then the other project I.
Hamner Place, we have Hamner Place.
Yeah, if it's the one I think it is, I think we're working with the, the team here at the city. To examine options, it's not on one of our current routings, uh, closer to Route three than it is to the Route four. So we will certainly, you know, take a look at that as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chair and members of the Commission, if I may, we do, so staff had a proposed. Route change from what you see there to try to accommodate the Hamner Place, and it's under review by our R T A, so. Um, your comments and the, and the comments of our, uh, audience members have, have, have been noted, and so R T A is going to be considering those things.
Very good. Thank you, let's move on. Uh, public hearings, item seven point one, we have a conditional use permit for sale of alcohol beverages.
Yes, that's, that's correct, and tonight's presentation will be done by our assistant planner, Mr. Alan Lynn.
Okay.
Well, that would be important, right?
Okay, okay.
Um, thank you, Gina. Um, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Um, to reiterate, tonight's staff will be presenting the conditional use permit for the sales. Of beer and wine at the Big Walk Restaurant that will be doing business as Griddle Mongolian Grill. Thank you. So as a project summary, Big Walk Restaurant has applied for a type forty-one alcohol license. To allow the sale of beer and wine, no mixed drinks or distilled spirits for onsite consumption. The subject, the subject location as seen on the screen as a red dot is on the northeast corner of Limonite and Sumner Avenue. In the Eastvale Marketplace Retail Center. Provided in the next slide for better clarity is a site map of the subject location at the northeast corner of Sumner and Limonite. Again, identified uh under as a red dot. Here's a photo taken at the end of August showing the future location of the Big Walk at the right of the photo. And for operation, the operation of beer and wine sales will occur until eight P M from Sunday to Thursday. And eight thirty P M on Friday and Saturday. The floor plan shows an outline of the proposed storage location, the alcohol will be displayed in a refrigerator behind the checkout counter. If a customer chooses to purchase alcohol and has been verified to be of legal drinking age. Uh, by a trained employee, the employee will open the beverage provided to the customer for onsite consumption only. As a note, the applicant will be selling beer only during this operation in single-serve twelve-ounce cans. And glass bottles as well as twenty-ounce cans at the largest. As you can see in this site plan. Um, this point, this site plan shows that the alcohol storage location from the previous slide. At the front service area as well as the rear storage location of the unrefrigerated beer. Cans and bottles that would be used for restocking the French, the front refrigerator. In this site map, you can see in the red dots at the southeast corner of the Eastvale Marketplace Retail Center is Big Walk. Um, in the blue for onsite sales of alcohol, south, directly south of the red dot is Burger Rim. And directly south again in blue is Piology. At the northeast corner of East Mel Mark, Eastvale Marketplace in blue again is Mesamis Nail Salon, Nails and Beauty Lounge. And at the northernmost point of Eastvale Marketplace in green for off-site sales of alcohol is Smart and Final. As shown here is all of the existing onsite sales of alcohol in Eastvale. And in summary of the C O As, um, provided by the Police Department Review. Typical conditions of approval were provided. For example, time restrictions in which the alcohol can be served, requirements for surveillance and monitoring. Employee training and consumption boundaries. The finding of approval of Big Walk is consistent with the general plan and zoning code as well as the Airport Land Use Commission. It has been determined that the use will not be detrimental to the sound, surrounding neighborhood. Staff recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the C U P. For the sale of beer and wine. Planning Commission options, one, approve the project with additional changes and or conditions. Two, continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions and, or three, deny the C U P. This concludes staff's presentation, staff is available to answer any questions. Also, the applicant's, um, uh, applicant's representative also husband is here tonight. To answer any questions as well, thank you.
Thank you, uh, so at this time I think we should open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Um, I think we should, could hear from applicants to start with. Have they filled out a blue card? Do they need to fill out a blue card?
Have not filled out a blue card, but we will have them do so.
Okay, after you're done, you can fill out a blue card, so if you want to make a presentation before the planning commission, okay?
Go, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, hi, how are you?
Good.
Very good.
Tell us a little bit about your restaurant.
Okay, um, basically, we uh already have the one location in Rancho Cucamonga. The business name is called Big Walk Mongolian Grill, excuse me. So that this is our second location in Eastvale, and we are so glad had the opportunity to entering the city of Eastville to expand our business. Um, as Alan, Mr. Alan Lynn just mentioning. This is, um, we need to go through all the procedures to selling beer and wine. Like from the five years since we have the first location in Rancho Cucamonga. We have the fully training for a server certification to serve the alcohol and beer and wine as well. But at that location, we only have selling the beer. So same as city, um, the location as city of Eastville, we also selling the beer. Bottle, uh, the glass bottle or the can bottle only. So that we doesn't have any, um, issues, because we have the. Mature training for the server to serve and have the, all the procedure to check the. Certification from the server and also from the staff has legally selling to the, uh, the beer to the customers. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have any questions for the applicant? What kind of food is Mongolian Grill?
Oh, Mongolian Grill as a very, uh, typical and very standard images is like a. Big round of the flat iron at the center of the building or the unit. And customer could pick their lovely or their flavored ingredients. Um, and the sauces combination as well to pick from, and they just cook from the big, like six inch. Of the big iron, flat iron from it. But for this one, we make it a little bit changes, we have the square size of it, not like a big round sizes, right?
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any other, uh, cards to speak on this?
Yes, we have one from Keith White.
Keith White? Hello, Keith White?
Hello.
Good to see you again.
I'm supportive of this restaurant, um, I heard it was in Rancho Cucamonga, but I never got a chance to try it. But I hope they'll prove the site, I only drink wine, so that's why. But that's another reason why I wanna make sure our, our T A Route four goes by Limonite in summer. Because that's another prize, so that's the reason why I wanted to make sure. I go down there and try this restaurant store there too, because I want to support Eastvale, because I went, moved here last year, April fifteenth. I used to live here way back, and then moved out, and then moved back on April fifteenth for twenty eighteen. So I just wanted to check, you know, I do support this restaurant, and I hope you guys will approve it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with no further cards for speakers, uh, we will close the public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Do you have any comments or questions for staff or for the applicant? I think, so if we have no comments, do we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages? Sale of beer, beer and wine?
Motion approved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Leanie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Uh, okay, down to item eight, Commissioner Business, Commission Business, do we have any business for the Commission? None, anything?
No business.
No business, okay, staff report, any staff reports?
Yeah, we do have a couple of announcements, uh, so. You already received a copy of the Eastvale connection, but I just wanted to draw your attention that this weekend, September twenty first is the residential cleanup. So if you have any, uh, items that need to be, uh, donated and or shredded or anything like that, this is the, this is the Saturday to do so. Um, also that the, uh.
At Ramirez Junior High, it's gonna be at Ramirez Junior?
That is correct, I believe so, I can double check that. Uh, because I didn't list that here, but I'll find that out and give it to you afternoon, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
Ramirez Intermediate School, yes, that's correct, it is, from eight A M to twelve P M. Um, and then lastly, I also wanted to let you know that the next planning commission meeting is going to be on, on October, uh, sixteenth, so.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, uh, Commissioners Communications, Commissioner Hovey? Commissioner Houston?
Just, uh, want to say congratulations, uh, to Councilmember Clint Lormore for his, uh. Uh, successful appointment to our board, SCAG's, uh, uh, board as the second vice president. So we now have, uh, one of our councilmembers as an executive officer of a, uh, of the nation's largest metropolitan planning organization.
Very good. Commissioner Charleston?
Yeah, I just have one question for, I guess it would be Chad, so. We had a house in our neighborhood that was, uh, popped by the sheriffs. Two months ago, where they were doing something wrong at their house. They had caution tape on the house for about two or three weeks. And it looked like the residents tried to get back in and get stuff out. So somehow, either the sheriffs or the city found out about it, and they boarded the front of their house up with. It looks pretty gaudy. So I'm trying to figure out is, how long does a system or process like this take, because I have a lot of residents in our neighborhood. Are asking me, when is this going to be resolved, when will the wood come off, because everybody that comes into the neighborhood. Wonders what happened at that house. Now, the house isn't destroyed, there's a car in the, the lot, there's a boat beside it. But you can tell that there's zero activity there. So how, how would you research that to find out what's going on and when it's going to be resolved?
Yeah, I, I, I think we would need to, um, coordinate or talk with the Sheriff's Department, I'm not familiar with that particular incident. But city staff can definitely look into that at a staff level and, and, and provide a report back.
And then Gina, I have a quick question for you, have we gotten any farther ahead on? Vehicles that are not actually, that should be in the neighborhood? That are work vehicles, but yet, remember, if they pull the trailer and keep it hooked up to their truck, they're running a complete business. But yet, they can't have a boat in the driveway, they can't have a camper in front of their house, have we solved that yet? Are we getting closer?
Uh, yes, and so, uh, do you recall maybe, maybe two or three months ago? Where we presented that memorandum and explained exactly what the law was. Um, if she, if, if the commissioners can recall that, do you recall that, okay? So, um, since then, our community enhancement and safety manager. Mister Johnny Turfer has been working to, uh, clear out the list of those items that have been pending. And then also, uh, to, and also to address those issues that are, that are happening with our vehicles that are being parked in certain places, and so as you know. As com, as complaints come in to, uh, our community enhancement safety team, they can be addressed. But if there's one in particular that still not, hasn't been addressed, or hasn't, uh, they haven't revisited it, if you could just let us know after this meeting. And we'll take a look at that, but yes, they've made great strides in clearing out the backlog.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
Thank you. So I literally was driving down from San Barbara, and I made it just in time. Um, to attend the California, uh, American Planning Association Conference, um, so it was a successful conference. Learned a lot, um, there's, you know, there's a whole bunch of information out there. Um, especially that's coming out of, coming down from our state. Um, that I think, uh, would be beneficial if, uh, our commissioners would also get, um, some of those information. Um, uh, for example, uh, you know, W R Co. just finished the S P seven forty-three, uh, study. Um, and they, they even had a case study in there for, for Eastvale, so I think it's. Um, having some of our commissioners learn about S P seven forty-three, what that means. Um, as it kicks in in July, uh, of next year, I think that'll be, that'll be helpful. Uh, there's a whole bunch of things related to housing these days. Um, the whole conference was full of housing sessions. Um, there's at least like, I think, hundred different housing bills out there. Um, that are coming down the pipeline, that's gonna impact our planning work and our, our decision-making ability. So I think it's, it'll be important, um, to, for our commission to kind of understand. In future, going, going, in, in future to understand what's coming down the pipeline, what's happening with the housing. Um, what kind of say we would actually have as a city? And what kind of rights we would be taken away by our state. and what kind of rights we would be taken away by our state, or possibility of being taken away by our state in the future as well. So um last couple of weeks have been consumed by RENA, Regional Housing Need Assessment for me. Um and and as I'm sure uh Commissioner Leanie would um also attest to. But I think um that also brings me to the next point about um understanding the numbers, uh the regional housing need assessment numbers for our city, uh which is around three to four thousand. Um I think kind of explaining what that means to the commission, I think, would be would be helpful as well. Um and what 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 the implication might be in the future for our city. So I think those are some of the big topics um that was discussed at the conference. Um and I think it'll be really beneficial for our commissioners to uh hear about it. And also, next year, it's in Riverside. Um we'll be hosting the conference, so you know, I think we should all go. Um and um you know, I saw all of the uh commissioners from Temecula up there in Santa Barbara, so you know, I think next year, we should all, all five of us should be up there, or in Riverside.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee. We will uh provide the legislative update of all of the housing information what we've done as far as RENA is concerned, et cetera, uh at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um I just got a couple of things. Um one, um the ninety-nine cent store. Their landscaping is is terrible. They they have a lot of uh trash in their landscaping. They don't pick it up. It's getting bad. We need to uh, if there's some way we could have somebody address that issue, I know, uh Public Works or uh Code Enforcement or something like that. They have the break area that they're ma- mandated to have outside the store for their employees and a lockup area for their bikes, but they have no trash receptacle in that area for that trash, so it stays on the table. The wind that comes down the fifteen, I fifteen corridor just blows it right off into the bushes. So there's trash all over that place all the time. I mean, I think they make a a slight attempt to pick it up once in a while, but not enough. It's, they need to do a better job. Um so and I have a question too about like my neighborhood. There's a home on uh one of the main entrances going into our neighborhood where they seem to, they're ignoring their side yard where it's facing the street, like if they don't own it or it's not their responsibility. Is there some kind of code that we could uh enforce, uh code enforcement to uh get them to maintain that side of the yard? Because it's like a blighted section of the uh neighborhood, whereas they come into our neighborhood, so I'm just wondering if there's anything that could be done or code enforcement could go out there.
If you can provide that information to us, we will uh refer that to Johnny Turfer.
Uh E-citizen, if.
You can do E-citizen, or you can let me know after the meeting, and we'll get that information to Mr. Johnny.
Thank you very much. That's just in curiosity. I mean, just uh because it does look bad, and it's the main one, right, coming right into the neighborhood, so. I won't say what neighborhood, but it's right into the neighborhood. Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, I forgot one one thing, and I saw Brian back there, and I I know I told him at the conference, uh Brian was also at the conference uh with me. Um but uh SB two, um let's um, you know, I I would like to hear what our um kind of uh vision is. For SB two, that's the grant funding that's coming down the, coming down the pipeline from the state that we that we can use to address some of these housing issues. So I think um having some of the, some of the input from our commissioners would be helpful for that, so. Um any ideas on how to streamline housing or build more housing? Um I don't know. Uh there's, you know, maybe maybe uh folks on the list might have some ideas on that, so um I think it'll be good to kind of uh also get an idea of what staff is thinking, what the, what they uh, what the commission is thinking as well.
Uh thank you very much. With that said, no other comments, I will adjourn the meeting. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.